Do order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2018-28 for December 18th, 2018. Those who like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
[Inaudible] I will be the king, the kingdom come, and I will be done on earth as it is now. It was a day that we break, as we break with our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and we leave this land without division, but the Lord has given us a kingdom and power, and we will remember that. For the purposes to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know if all the lights are on. Entertained a motion from council to approve the legislative minutes from December 4th, 2018.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from November 20th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from December 4th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried, minutes are approved. At this time, we have a special presentation for Mr. Jack Lennox out in recognition of his retirement. And let me go over the podium here. During the end of the December.
We're going to misuse the proclamation for your retirement. I really appreciate all the work that you've done over the many years you've shared with us. I know that you've done an excellent job as a department head. I think you were one of the department heads that had to be most publicly exposed at times. I mean that in a good way.
Okay. I didn't hear all that.
Did I cut it off again?
Yeah. Oh, I don't know. Yeah.
Again, okay.
The switch shouldn't be there.
Okay. But anyway, what I mean by that is a lot of times, I mean, not only a department head, but you have to be a diplomat. And because a lot of times when you come to the table, your department demands so much on the public as far as responsibility, whether it's zoning issues, whether it's land development, whether it's poultry houses, no matter what it might be. I know that some of the most critical issues that have ever come before this council in the last 15 years, 16 years, the most critical issues are usually revolving around land use issues. And that does fall right in your bailiwick. And you've handled it excellently over the many years. And I appreciate your help at the table and your help personally that you've given me and other council members with the advice. Okay? I'm going to read the proclamation for you here. I'll have to get the glasses out. It's a proclamation for John "Jack" Lennox. Whereas Jack Lennox has began his career with Wycomico County in December 2002, where he served as Director of the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development. And whereas during his tenure with Wycomico County, Mr. Lennox celebrated many achievements, including updating the Comprehensive Zoning Code, adopting the 2017 Comprehensive Plan, and consolidating permits and inspections. Whereas additional accomplishments of Mr. Lennox include establishment of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, establishment of the Code Enforcement Division, and expansion of the geographic information systems. Whereas Mr. Lennox is currently the longest-serving director for the Wycomico County Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development, and retiring after a successful 16-year career. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council celebrates and honors John "Jack" Lennox for his many years of dedicated service to the citizens of Wycomico County, and wish him a happy, healthy, and restful retirement. Done this 18th day of December in 2018.
Great.
So thanks again. And we have a. Seal on it.
Don't you put your ashes in.
The bag. There's nothing else in here. Just the bag. Thank you, John. If you want to come.
Yeah. Yeah. Where's your purse?
Thank you all for your kind words. I am reflecting back on a recent conversation with Executive Culver when I was thanking him for all his support. And I came to the realization that my decision to move to the eastern shore, specifically to work for Wycomico County, is one of the best I've ever made. And I don't know what this next phase will bring, but certainly whatever happens, Carrie and I, it will happen here in Wycomico. I leave feeling very comfortable with the support that you will continue to get. Lori and Keith, Chairman DeShiel as well. And I wish you all best of luck in your next phase and the new term. Thank you again very much.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Hurley.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 139, 2018, to amend the fiscal year 2019-2023 capital improvement program and capital budget to include federal grant funding in the amount of $820,000 for the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism, project titled Pirate's Warp Master Plan and Park Development, and to increase the fiscal year '19 general front PEGO to $354,758 for said project. And we do have Mr. Steve Miller and Pam Olin here from Recreation, Parks, and Tourism.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 139, 2018. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please. State your name and your county residence and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 139, 2018. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 139, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 139, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Nexus Resolution Number 140, 2018, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant award from the Federal Land Water Conservation Fund through the National Park Service in the amount of $820,000 for the Pirate's Warp Master Plan and Park Development Project.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 140-2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
This the grant where we, it's a matching grant?
Mr. Miller, thank you. Miss Olin, you certainly are welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, so this is a federal grant that would be matched.
This, and according to you guys, you don't have the plans because you need the money to develop the plans and get the cost of the project.
So the, in this current year, CIP, we were funded $100,000 to develop a master plan. That's underway. That's not been completed yet, so it's in progress. But what this would allow us to do is to develop the park. Once a plan is developed, that would give us development funds to execute the plan.
So we're not obligate, you know, this is a, what, $600,000 or $800,000 grant?
Yeah.
We're not obligated to spend the, to match the entire $800,000 if the cost of the park is less than that, is that correct?
Right.
Or the cost of the development or whatever.
We're obligated to match, but if we end up spending less, I'm certain we could, if the project is complete, yeah.
So the way it works is, do I have this right? The way it works is that we, you know, figure out there's a project that we want to use this money for, and then we apply, we get reimbursed as we use the money. So if we use a million dollars of it, we can get reimbursed at the $500,000, but we don't have to do the rest.
Correct.
So when you applied, when you applied for this grant, where did you come up with the 1.6 million that was needed to develop this property?
So it was basically the priorities that we had outlined with water access. So we developed a budget. It was a very rough budget, but in shoring up the shoreline, if we're able to put in a boat ramp and then some of the other development features, we felt like it's going to be in that ballpark. And with the federal grant opportunity, you know, we also felt like that number, part of why we came up with that number is we felt like we could comfortably match it without having to ask the council for additional funding, which is where we are today. So we're not asking for additional funds. We're asking to use the funds that we've saved over the years and state grant matches. And we've invested $100,000 and the return will be 1.6. So we feel good about developing a significant park without having to ask the county for additional dollars.
So you had to have some kind of plan to give to the state or the federal government to get the grant?
Yes.
But we've not seen that plan.
Yeah, I mean, that was all in the council briefing materials. So the, what was included in that grant and why we received such a large grant is the priorities that we've outlined, which is water, public water access, light recreation. Those are big initiatives at the state level and the federal level. So they gave us $820,000 because they liked what they saw in that plan. And I think between the work group that was established by the executive, a plan that was endorsed by that work group, by the executive, that I think was reaffirmed at our public input session a month ago. I think the concepts the National Park Service liked, the state of Maryland likes, I think the county executive has endorsed, the concepts I think are very solid. I think what we're in the process of doing now is putting that to paper now to visually see what is this thing going to be. And we've got to plot that. And there's some work to do with that. That's a process. But the Park Service saw enough to say, hey, we're going to put $820,000 to this plan.
To follow up with Councilman Holloway's question, not sure that you gave the answer. Where did you come up with the figures for 1.6 million?
Two things. One, we felt like the, there was an opportunity for the funding, and we felt like we could match that number. So I think it could have been bigger, honestly, if, I think there's, it's going to be more expensive than I think you might think with infrastructure and the different things we could do. So we felt like, one, that was a number we could match without having to ask the county for additional funding. The second is we developed, in part of the grant application, we submitted a budget that included infrastructure, boat ramp, those types of things. And that was about the number that we estimated.
So if you didn't do an RFP, how did you come up with that figure?
We do, we put in boat ramps in other places in the county.
So you were just guesstimating.
Yeah. At this point, it's a rough budget. We've built pavilions and other parks, we've built boat ramps. So we've done this type of work. It's just, this was our best estimate at this point. But part of the master planning process as well, they're going to develop a budget for us that would more specifically outline what they think the things will cost.
So if it goes over 1.6, the county's going to have to foot the rest of the bill?
Yeah, it won't go over. I mean, we're going to spend what we have.
See, that's, that's my main concern right now is you keep saying it's your guesstimation and things you've done, but we don't see it on paper as your, you know, as these estimates from a firm that's going to do the work and so forth.
Well, with.
I understand what you're going to say is about with the grant, that you have to get the money to do the master plan, but it's like we're giving you a blank check.
Like any capital project, there is a list of wants and a list of needs. And with that capital project, we will have to see where things fall out when we get the final plan. And there may be some things that we have to decide that we defer. We will not spend over the money that we are allocated here because that is the money that we're being given. So if there are features that ultimately we can't install, we will make a decision as a county as to whether or not those features are necessary or needed now or in the future. So there will not be a request to say that we have to go over the 1.6 million dollars. We will use the money that we are given and install the best features that we can for this park up to that amount, and then make decisions as a county if there's anything more necessary, which we don't know yet. But like any CIP, it is like our CIP. You put in your best estimates, and when you're approaching a construction project for any building or any park or any land, you make the best estimate that you can with the funding that you can. And then once you get the final plan, you make the final determination as to what you can put in.
Yeah, and I'm confident in your estimates. I mean, it was in our material, you know, it was for the shoreline stabilization and possibly, you know, the boat launching ramp or a soft ramp in the trail system and a pavilion and so forth. Obviously, things like particularly shoreline stabilization and so forth is very expensive. So, you know, I don't have any doubts in terms of it'll easily cause the kind of numbers you're talking about. So, you know, I'm very confident in the estimates you provided, particularly at this stage of the game.
Yeah, and if, I didn't bring copies of it, but in the grant application, which should have been in your last briefing materials, there is a budget estimate in there. And we can certainly look at that if you're not comfortable with it. But yeah, I can assure you, I mean, to Pam's point, what funding we have is the funding that we're going to work with. If it goes beyond that, then we either phase it or cut it short. But it's a unique opportunity that we have in getting $820,000 grant that, you know, we can turn $100,000 into 1.6 and develop a park that we've been sitting on for over 20 years that we haven't done anything with, that there's no public access right now. I think this is a very unique opportunity for us, so.
Well, what's confused me is that when Mark, when Councilman Kilmer and I attended the public hearing, I was under the impression that the public was informed at that time that there would not be a boat ramp. I haven't seen anybody yet that said whether or not we're going to, there's even going to be a parking lot. If you have a boat ramp, you certainly did state to the public at that meeting that my impression was a boat ramp might not even be a good idea because where would you put the trailers? And if you put the trailers, you're going to begin to impact the property. So the most that I came out with the, with the public hearing was that it was going to be a great area for bird watching, it was going to be a great area for trails. But nothing was decided yet as to whether there would be a boat ramp, the feasibility of it. We don't even know if there's even going to be a parking lot. And if the parking lot's going to be there, what materials or what costs are going to be for the parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, there would have to be a parking lot. There's going to be basic infrastructure. You're going to have to widen the road, a parking lot, a restroom facility, some type of public gathering space, if that's a pavilion or some type of space. The boat ramp is subject to approval. I mean, because that channel, we've talked about it many times, but the channel being narrow, we're not going to put a boat ramp there if we don't get approvals from MDE and the Army Corps. So we're in the process of having those discussions through a master plan process. They're engaging all those groups. If they tell us we can't put in a boat ramp, then we won't put in a boat ramp. But at this point, because of the way we acquired the property with a Chesapeake Bay Access Fund, the whole point was water access, we feel like it's at least our obligation to pursue whether or not we can do a ramp. And if the answer's no, then we'll move on. But we're going to at least find that out, and we don't have a definitive answer at this point on that.
Do we even have a formal study that shows that if we put the $1.6 million investment in this? Do we have any substantial study that shows exactly what type of visitorship we'll have? How many people are asking for this? How many people will come to this park?
We don't have those numbers, no. I mean, it's anecdotal, so I don't have a study. But if you go to Pemberton Park on any given day, this would be very similar to Pemberton in that Pemberton has a historic component that draws folks, but also a nature component. And any day you go to Pemberton, there's people out there walking those trails. You would rarely go out there where there's no people. I would envision this the same. So, but I don't, to answer your question, we don't have a study to say how many people.
Do you know by any chance, historically, just with Pemberton, what kind of calls we've incurred over the years, you know, with the parking lot and the trail system and so forth?
As far as annual maintenance, that type of thing?
No, just when we did that originally, I know it was over 20 years ago, but.
I don't know what it costs.
Right, I was just curious.
I don't know.
What that might have cost.
I don't know.
To be clear, is this, if we do take these, if we do move forward with these funds, there will be a public process to determine what, you know, a strong public process after this to determine what should happen on the property?
Yes.
And what you're saying is that you have X amount of dollars here, you know, we can, we could actually spend less than that if we so choose?
Yeah, that's a possibility, yeah. And the process from here, so we've started the master planning process. The process from this point would be now, hopefully after today, we would know what our budget is that we're working with. And then within the next few months, as this master plan process goes down the road, we would present various concepts on paper so people can physically see. Here's option A, option B, option C. People can react, I like this, I like that, I don't like that. And then we refine it from there. So the public, it's not going to be, here's the plan, take it or leave it. We're going to engage the public so they will see that, they'll be allowed to have input. And then we'll have to obviously make some decisions as to the best way to put the park together. But it's an ongoing process, and we intend to engage the public in that process.
I will say that, you know, especially the last six months on the campaign trail, surprisingly, the issue that people brought up among the most was getting out on the water and how hard that is to do on Wycomico.
Yeah.
And I know we have other challenges when it comes to actual boat traffic and barges coming through there, but the bill, you know, when we were out there yesterday, it doesn't seem to be like that would be a major issue. But folks do want to get out on the water, they want kayak and canoe access. And I think that's why you're seeing a larger state interest and federal interest in that.
So how will the council be formally involved in this, you know, ongoing process?
Um, that. Yeah, that might be a better question for the executive staff. I mean, what we would do is keep everybody informed as to where we are in the planning process. And I would envision, and Wayne, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I would envision either another public meeting or to come to this body to show those options and say, hey, here's where we are, and allow people to react to the different concepts. I think the encouraging thing is when you talk about the National Park Service, state of Maryland, the public hearings, our work group, the county executive's office, I think everyone is in the same vein at least. There are specifics that may differ, but everyone's in the same vein as to the vision for the park. And like I said, we got an $820,000 grant. They saw something that they liked in that, in that application. So I think the public process now is just going to refine this thing and get specifics, which I know, I know you all have wanted. And you'll get that, it's just we don't quite have that yet.
And future grants, we have to approve the acceptance of future state grants or anything else.
Which is, yes, which is the matching of that. So as we go down the refinement process, we would be coming to you with the POS application and approve, we have, we will submit to the state an application for the POS portion of the match. It will go through their process, it will go to the Board of Public Works. And if it is approved by the Board of Public Works, then it would come back here for acceptance because again, it's not in our budget to have those funds. Depending on timing and that kind of thing, it would be either in next year's budget, we would just build it into next year's budget, or we would come to this body in this fiscal year, again, for an amendment to amend the grant portion of the budget.
You know, I've mentioned this property a number of times over the years when other properties were being considered to be purchased or developed or whatever, that we already own this, why don't we develop it? Why don't we do something with it? And that's, I think, the best thing to do with it. I was a little taken aback yesterday when I went down. I hadn't really examined the property. I didn't know it was split in two by the stone road or the paved road, you know, it's in two different sections. And it's my understanding from the council people that attended the meeting with the work group that you put together, that this is way beyond what they're expecting. They're expecting, like John said, walking trails and bird watching trails. And it's a beautiful sight on the river. I mean, it's amazing that where that house was at, how nice that is and all. But, you know, you're coming to us again with really, you know, no real plans other than just, we're going to give you a million, authorize you to use a million six dollars, a million $600,000 to develop something, but we don't know what we're getting. And that gives.
But that's the whole purpose of the, I mean, I'm looking right here at the application and the statement of word. You know, in item number one, what the recipient agrees to do is, number one, create a master plan for Pirate's Warp. I mean, there's eight items listed in there for the application. But first item is, I mean, that's why they need the money, is to create the master plan. And then they don't, they can't do anything without, you know, creating the plan and getting the approvals from, and you have lots of players in this between, you know, dollars coming from the federal, the state, and our county. So, but this really just, this really just opens the door to create a master plan for Pirate's Warp, which is a great enhancement to our park system.
That's why the original approval that the council made of the CIP included $100,000. I don't think you need more than $100,000 to create a master plan.
That's what they're leveraging. They're turning that $100,000 and potentially 1.6 million if they need it.
No, they're not leveraging $100,000, they're leveraging at least $354,000.
The hundred's part of that, but.
I understand.
Yeah.
And I don't think we need $354,000 for a master plan. I don't believe we do, do we?
No, not for the master plan. But, but once that plan is complete, whatever that is, we have a tremendous opportunity here with federal funding that I'd hate to see go away.
If we decline these funds, will the Land and Water Conservation Fund, is that ding us for future applications?
Yes.
I mean, is that definite? Do we know that?
I've heard that from multiple people. I think, I think that would, yes, I think that would harm us for future funding.
Well, we're not turning it down. I mean, we're not saying that we're turning it down, we're not contacting them and refusing it.
Right.
I mean, this grant has been open for what, four years? Isn't this grant open for four years?
This, this, we have four years to complete the project. But I think they're getting a little bit antsy as far as us accepting, officially accepting the grant. But we have.
Have they implemented a deadline?
I'm sorry?
Have they implemented a deadline to accept this grant?
They haven't given us a hard deadline to accept it, but, you know, I've received a number of calls asking about that. And I explained to them, you know, there's a process that we're going through locally and elections and all that. So they were understanding of that. But, but I do think if, at the end of the day, we say, thanks, but no thanks, I think it would harm our ability to apply for future funding.
And our four years has started.
It has started.
It started counting based on when they said they've awarded it, so.
So the four years is the deadline to complete the project?
Yes.
Yeah, that was September, so we'd have September of '22.
But you don't expect it to be a four-year project?
No, I would anticipate about three years because, you know, the remainder of this year would be planning. And then there'll probably be a good amount of time, nine months to a year potentially of permitting. And we may have a Phase 1 archaeology. Like, there's a lot of things that I think could stretch this thing out. But typically, they give three years. I asked for four, just so we could be sure, and they granted that.
Speaking of that archaeology, is there any, if there is any holdups, can the waiver be put in place to expand the deadline?
The four-year.
To extend the deadline?
I think, I think we could, if we could make a case, like I said, typically it's three years, and we got four. So I'm hopeful that we can complete it within that time. But if there's circumstances beyond our control, I'm sure we could.
Well, I'm excited about this project and any kind of project like this that will enhance the quality of life in Wycomico County. But I do understand the concern about going over on the spending.
Yeah.
Previously, you said you guys had open space money or something that you could use to match this eight?
Yeah.
Where's that at?
So that's in process of being approved right now. So there's essentially three matching sources to, we have to match the 820. 354 of it would be county funds that we've already got. So the hundred in the CIP, the 254 that we're asking to move from the farm leases and leases we've saved up. So the local funding is the one-piece. Program Open Space is the second. That was $315,000 that we have. It's in, it's in the approval process at the state. And then the other 200 would be from Waterway Improvement Grant.
So if they're denied, so that means that money would have to come from the county?
If it was denied, yes. But, but the same folks that are going to be approving. If it was denied, yes, but, but the same folks that are going to be approving that program open space are the folks that put their names on and endorsed us with the federal grant, so the likelihood of that not coming, it's zero, I, I don't think.
So, how long that process gonna take?
Typically, the POS is a sixty to ninety day approval, and we submitted that some time ago, so we should hear very soon on that, but there's virtually, I mean, until we go through the process, I can't guarantee it, but.
But if, if that money's denied, we don't have to spend that, you know, the X amount of dollars we applied for, we just scale the project back.
Correct.
To not do whatever we're going to spend that money on.
Yeah, you could do that.
We're, we're not obligated to spend, I mean, we're committing ourselves to a hundred thousand that we already approved, the two hundred and fifty-four that is reserved to use on that property, and that's all the county portion that we're committing ourselves to.
Correct, and, yes, so all, all we would have to spend of the eight hundred and twenty would be the three hundred and fifty four thousand dollars, and we could stop it at that point if we don't get any other grant funding, and again, that was the process I was saying that we would be coming back to you with the approvals from the state saying that we have been awarded POS grants.
But the three fifty-four is a bit of a, I think is a little bit misleading, because the three fifty-four is simply what we are, have approved to put into PEGO, there's additional funding coming from your department, is that not correct? Because you said we already have money that we, from the leases, et cetera, et cetera.
That's the two fifty-four.
Yeah.
Is the two fifty-four in addition to the two, three fifty-four?
No, so you got the, the one hundred that you all gave in last year's CIP, plus the two fifty-four, which is the farm hunting leases that were saved up through the years, so that's the three fifty-four, so those are the county funds.
So, with, with the hundred thousand dollars we gave in last year's budget, why hasn't there been a plan started?
That's what is happening, that's, that's what we've, we've encumbered, we've encumbered a master planner with that money, and we've also encumbered an environmental.
So, is any portion of that master plan done?
Um, we've had two meetings, and we've had progress, but we don't have.
How long will that take?
Um, it usually takes six to nine months at least, so we're hoping by June to have a completed product.
So, when did we approve a hundred thousand?
Last year's CIP.
So, we, you already had that amount of time, right? Just about that amount, amount of time?
Yeah, we, we didn't start until, we wanted to get this grant application to know what we were dealing with, so we didn't actually start the process till October, so, so it's in progress, and, and I hear your concerns, I, I think you'll see what you want to see, it's just, we just don't have it at this second.
I got one more question or statement, question, I guess, when this all started, there was a house on the property, and the county executive decided to tear it down, and we heard a lot of grief about that, then there was some discussion about cutting down some of the timber, marketing selective, and we heard about that, so what are we going to hear when you decide to put in a boat ramp in a big parking lot, from the same folks that's had the issues with the other work that we've been doing there, or tried to do there?
From what?
You know, you say this is your work group, the people you've been listening to, so what are we going to hear from them when, when this, this, this so-called bird watching park and trail park becomes a commercial type of a area, I guess you would call it, almost commercial, recreational area, but it's going to have parking lots and, and boat ramps, and there's Sundays, there's going to be twenty trucks and, you know, which, I agree, there needs to be a boat ramp somewhere on that river, I'm not disputing that fact, but so what are we going to hear on, on, from that side of the, the fence about that?
I think the overwhelming response you will hear is, and Councilman Kilmer, you probably heard this, but I think will be folks being very happy that they have access, and I think.
Those folks will be, but what about the folks you've been working with, that's what I'm getting at, you've been working with an entirely different group of people.
And, and we have gotten very good support across the board, I think, I don't think anybody has balked or made any noise about infrastructure, parking, road access, public gathering space, you might get different opinions on a boat ramp in terms of its size, so I think you may get varying opinions of, we think it should be this size or that size, and those are decisions we're going to have to make, but again, by and large, for folks to have access both to the water and to the woods and to trails, I think we have, we have heard overwhelming positive support, even from folks that you referenced with those other issues that were very vocal and negative towards the project, those same folks have been very positive and have.
I agree that if we're going to spend a one point six million dollars, there ought to be a really nice boat ramp there.
Well, I mean, in, in terms of the boat ramp and maybe the pavilion or the, you know, issues, there, there may be some disagreement, I think what most of the, I guess, the vocal people that Joe's talking about want kind of less intrusive, less expensive options, so anything, we're going to hear pressure to keep the cost down, you know, in terms of, you know, not an ex, you know, expansive boat ramp or not a, you know, wedding facility with all the bells and whistles, but, you know, I mean, but, so, I, I think from our perspective, the outside pressure will be not to spend more money, it'll be to, you know, keep it as natural as possible with as little footprint as possible.
Yeah, and, and I think another safeguard is the folks that we're going to get the federal funding from, from Land Water Conservation, they're going to hold us to what we put in that application, which is these natural features, so if, if we go off the rails and say, hey, we want to put ball fields in, we'll hear local stuff, but we'll also hear from those folks, I think, I think they're all in the same vein as far as, as little development as possible, but, but you have to have the basic infrastructure, and I've not heard any negatives about that.
We, um, we're not against it, but it's just that we got a lot of questions, and you don't have a lot, you said you started a master plan, I mean, if we could see something in concrete and paper, you know, we'd probably feel a lot better, but, you know, we keep hearing, you know, what you want to do, what you want to do, and that's fine, but you said you got a guy working on the master plan, I mean, we could get some ideas or something from him, and what it's going to cost and so forth, in concrete, we'd probably feel a lot easier.
Yeah, yeah, I, you'll have that, I think, I think the best solution, I would reference you to the application, that, the federal application, because it does detail on there the elements that we had intended, there's some maps in there that have approximate locations in that application, none of that is set in stone, but, so if you're looking for something on paper, I would, I would refer you to the application, I think that, that lays all that out.
See, as I, I mentioned before once to you, it would be good in the future, and this is more long-term, it would be good to see some more information, I see, with the economic impact of, of a park like this, that's not, that isn't, as I mentioned before, we're not having ball fields out here with, you know, with softball teams coming through, but I'm sure, you know, places like Green Hill or Boonies or, you know, or Red Roost or others could, would want more business, I'm sure they would get more business, so if we could have a, you know, an attractive facility that could attract people from out of the county or to come in here and to visit this and then maybe spend money, that'll be helpful for them, but I would love to see a future studies, I, I, I think the Teddy Roosevelt Conservation Partnership I mentioned, they did a great report years ago, but that include hunting and other kind of things, it would be nice if you have any data, send it our way, that could really show what a potential park with minimal impact, what that could really do.
I would, I would like to see us table it, just to get a little bit more information, especially from the, the guy that's doing the planning.
Motion to table, is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion to second, take a roll call on it, on the table of Resolution one forty, two thousand and eighteen, Councilman McCain?
No, definitely opposed to that, I mean, I think.
Okay, no discussion, Councilman Davis and Councilman Holloway?
Can't discuss it, John?
No, not a table, Councilman Hastings?
Nay.
Councilman Kilmer?
Nay.
Council, Vice President Dodd?
Nay.
Chair votes, yes, we have four against table, so we'll continue the discussion on the resolution.
All right, my comment is going to be, I mean, this is just part, this is, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a pretty typical process to develop a raw piece of ground for a park, getting your grant applications and getting the funding, getting your master plan, your leveraging dollars, you know, this is all, we had this material, and, I mean, a lot of us keep saying we don't have any material, we've got, I mean, volumes of material here in our briefing stuff, I mean, I, I could read it by afternoon, but, you know, right here, you know, we got the, you know, what the grant is for, you know, is create the master plan, install planned landscape, says here, construct shoreline protection, construct picnic area, public restroom, you know, the possibility of, you know, looking to the boat ramp or soft landing pier, create walking, walking trail system, construct parking area, you know, signage, benches, exit points, public access, I mean, and I'm just taking, that's just one little portion, anyhow, I, you know, I think it's great for the community, I think we need to move forward, it's, you know, this is a property we've had for two decades, we find out, have the opportunity to turn this into a, you know, a great asset in the, you know, for our county, so, you know, I'm going to see if we move forward with it.
Any further discussion?
I don't want to table this, but I understand where my two colleagues are going with this, I think we've been dragging this out, but I'm, I'm hoping that our confidence in the director will help us move this forward and keep us informed, and hopefully we won't overspend what you're asking for.
Yeah, I'll just add on to that, I, I agree, I, I don't, I don't want to harm the relationship of Land and Water Conservation Fund in the future, so I don't want to delay any longer, but I do think we need a good public process, especially folks out in Mardella or other areas that are, you know, that are catchpenny roads where I grew up, not too far out from Athel Roads, would be good to have more input there.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution one forty, two thousand and eighteen, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Chair votes, nay, so we have four in favor and three against, Resolution one forty, two thousand and eighteen passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next two items on the agenda pertain to an appointment to the Wacomico County Planning and Zoning Commission, in accordance with Charter Section three fifteen, the county executive is to submit appointments to boards and commissions to the council for confirmation at a legislative session, the director of administration has submitted the name of Charles R. DeShiel Junior to the Wacomico County Planning and Zoning Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory body on planning, zoning, and developmental issues, including rezoning, subdivision, and site plan review, Resolution number one forty-one, two thousand and eighteen, is confirming the reappointment of Charles R. DeShiel Junior to the Wacomico County Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley, entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution one forty-one, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next item for business is Resolution number one forty-two, two thousand and eighteen, this is to amend Resolution number forty-eight, two thousand and eighteen, to change the reference of focus area to enterprise zone, council adopted Resolution number forty-eight, two thousand and eighteen, on May the fifteenth, approving the application to the Maryland Department of Commerce to designate a certain area in the county as a RISE zone, the Maryland Department of Commerce has indicated that the reference to focus area needs to be changed to enterprise zone because the county doesn't have any focus areas, we do have Laura Soper here, Director of Business Development for the city of Salisbury, if there are any questions.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution one forty-two, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next item for council's consideration is Resolution number one forty-three, two thousand and eighteen, declaring that five hundred Riverside Realty LLC is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for the property located at five hundred Riverside Drive, Salisbury, Maryland, in order for a business to qualify for enterprise zone benefits, it must meet one of the two specific statutory requirements, which are that the business must either make an investment in capital improvements of more than fifty thousand dollars, or they have to hire employees since they've located in the zone, Riverside Realty qualifies for the enterprise zone benefits because they've invested in more than fifty thousand in the property in the zone.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution one forty-three, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is Resolution number one forty-four, two thousand and eighteen, declaring that Empire Fitness LLC is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at six hundred Glen Avenue, Salisbury, Maryland, this company is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits because they also have invested in more than fifty thousand in the property located in the zone.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution one forty-four, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, the next item for consideration is Resolution number one forty-five, two thousand and eighteen, to increase the membership of the Wacomico County Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee from nine to ten members by adding a representative from the city of Salisbury, and we do have Mr. Wayne Strasberg and Tyler Waltson with the Planning and Zoning Department.
Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution one forty-five, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution one forty-five, two thousand and eighteen, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is Resolution number one forty-six, two thousand and eighteen, to authorize the county executive to accept a donation of property from Connolly Mill Associates LLP, consisting of two hundred and thirty-four point sixty-seven acres, more or less, located on the southerly side of and not binding upon Connolly Mill Road, adjacent to the Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex, on the council table are two resolutions, the first resolution is one that was inserted into the brief book yesterday, the other resolution is one that shows suggested amendments by Mr. Taylor.
Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution one forty-six, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion's second, discussion.
Good morning, Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration, just a few updates from last council meeting for the work session, on the insurance, we're ready to apply for the insurance once the property's in hand, on the surface mining exemption, I have signed plans over on my chair, I was going to bring those up, but we had one follow-up question from the state, we've sent right-of-way Platts, because the property isn't adjacent to Connolly Mill, they want to know how is the property being accessed and that we have an official entry point, we sent Platts, they've asked for the deeds, so we will have the final document, everything executed from the state should be this afternoon for the surface mining program.
How much is the insurance?
Uh, the insurance with everything is a little over a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, yeah, there was, the premium, which included the broker's commission, was a hundred and five thousand, there was a three percent state tax and a three percent terrorism risk insurance stipulation, so that bumped it up to a hundred and eleven and some change.
And that's ten years' worth, right?
Ten years, and, yeah, again, the, it should be in the brief book as Exhibit A, but it's a five million dollar total policy, and I think two hundred and fifty thousand dollars deductible, for, just as a refresher, the updated soil numbers for the pit was two million cubic yards of material, which we feel has an estimate of twenty million dollars, the one other item that Laura alluded to with the two resolutions in front of you, the final question from last meeting's work session was in regards to prorating the taxes asked by Councilman Holloway, and I was under the impression at the time that the thirty-five thousand dollar request included all the reimbursement they were going to get, what it, what the thirty-five thousand includes is taxes they have been billed already and want reimbursement for, the half-year taxes for this fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, the owners are, their intentions were to have that covered by the county, whether solid waste, in addition to the thirty-five thousand, they cut a nine thousand, I'm trying to think, five hundred and seventy-one dollar and forty-five cent check to the general fund, or we could increase the resolution from thirty-five thousand to forty-four and whatever to include that, so that they will still receive the bill if council chooses to, to do that, Mr. Smithhurst, who represents the property owners, is here, I will say, just closing my comments, that we, we still feel that for the twenty million dollars worth of soil, an additional nine thousand five hundred dollars shouldn't be the end of the world, hopefully, but with that, gladly entertain any questions.
Mrs. Hurley, I have a, a point of clarification here now, and for the public as well, what was in the brief book, the resolution in the brief book, is, I guess, along the same lines as to what the council discussed in the prior work session?
That is correct.
But then you said that Mr. Taylor had another resolution in front of us and one that was emailed to us, are those housekeeping measures that, that Mr. Taylor has added to this resolution?
They are actually matters that have been. They are actually matters that have been brought to our attention in regards to the proration of this year's property taxes, as well as on the exhibit that Mr. Young was referencing, we added a number five to that exhibit to clarify what policy form would be used.
But as far as the resolution that's in the brief book by itself, that's sustainable, and there's no, outside of maybe the request on these prorated taxes, what is in the brief book by itself does not require any amendments.
That is correct.
Yeah, that's true. To answer your question, though, about my, the suggestions I made, there are two items having to do with this half-year's taxes for this current fiscal year. I wouldn't call those housekeeping amendments.
No, I wasn't. I was saying, I was trying to distinguish between the two.
Yeah, there are two others that are housekeeping amendments, and we can get into those, I think it'd be better after you decide what you want to do with these taxes. Because if you're going to, if you're going to essentially waive, and I use that word guardedly because you can't actually waive taxes, but if you're going to provide that the county is going to reimburse the partnership for this current half-year's taxes this year, approximately $9,500, then I think the resolution needs to be amended, and the agreement that's attached to it needs to be amended to indicate that additional money that would be paid by the county to the partnership, and then it would come back in when the taxes are paid, when the deed is recorded.
Okay, well, the first item, I guess, we need to address is the $9,500. We know that Councilman Holloway has his own concerns as referenced to the mining.
I'd like to see us go ahead and table this until we do get the mining permit or the exemption papers.
Motion, is the motion tabled. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have Councilman Holloway, Vice President Dodd, Councilman Kilmer, and Councilman Hastings. That's a majority. This resolution has been tabled.
If we're still here when you get that paper today, can we readdress this?
If, yeah, I mean, if you, if you get the information that you need, Weston, as in reference to the mining.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I'll check my emails.
And we'll come back to the table.
Mr. President, can I make a comment? Can you not address the whole thing and make a contingent upon exceeding the exemption of the NDE?
Mr. Smithhurst.
Well, at this time, it has been tabled.
Mr. Smithhurst, can you speak into the mic for us, please?
Then we're out of time, because you have no more meetings this calendar year.
Well, the only suggestion that Mr. Holloway has mentioned that if, we'll probably be here until 2:30 today, 2:30, 3 o'clock today, and he's hoping that Mr. Young will be able to get those mining documents at that time, and we can bring it back to the table.
Shall we, shall we bring it back to the council once we find out what the status of the mining documents is this afternoon?
Sure, sure.
That's what he's saying.
When you get the signed papers.
Sure.
And if we don't have them in our hand at that time, then I would ask to be heard on the question of tabling it, as opposed to approving it subject to the receipt of.
Well, it has been, it has been tabled.
I know it has. I was just clarifying what we can do when we come back.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Cannon, I mean, Mr. Cannon, I would make a suggestion. You know, they made a very strong case that we need this property, and one of the main hangups has been this mining permit, and we feel that we're going to get it sometime in the future.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's an exemption of the permitting process.
I would suggest that we could pull together sometime between now and the end of the year for a very short meeting to approve this if we need to.
Yeah, if that's necessary, I'm fine with that. I think the mining permit's the only hangup. I mean, I'm not happy about the money issue, but I'm done with it. I mean, that's fine. So, the mining permit's the hangup.
I think we can pull four people, and they'll be in agreement.
I don't have a problem with a special meeting.
Mrs. Hurley, any special meeting required or posted?
We'll have to do public notice.
It'd be public notice in the paper.
Yeah, we can post it on the website and send it to the news media.
With how much notice?
Typically, five days.
Five days.
Okay. No, we appreciate that consideration, and as soon as we get it.
This isn't done to hold this up or turn it down. We just want to make sure. You've made such emphasis on this, on this property being worth all this money because of the dirt.
Sure.
If we take it and we can't get the dirt.
Yeah, again, the county's exempt. We need to show the state that, how we will reclaim the site when we're done with it, because we could dig it and then leave it a mess, and the state wants to see what our plans are, that we're following standard erosion, sediment control. It's a formality. It's just to pull plans together, which we did. Took time.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. Hopefully, we'll hear from you this afternoon. Mrs. Hurley?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Resolution number 147, 2018, designating persons for training under the Open Meetings Act. State law requires each public body to designate at least one individual who is an employee or a member of the public body to receive training. Other requirements of the Open Meetings Law, this resolution is designating all council members to receive the training. Training is to be completed within 90 days, and the classes can be taken through MAKO, the Maryland Association of Counties, or you can take the class online.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 147, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea that we all take it at MAKO, but I do like the idea for those that are so inclined to do online classes that the option is available.
Yeah, the MAKO offers it Friday morning of the winter conference, like it's that morning of the 6th, I guess.
The last day.
Is that dated the 6th?
The last day.
It's the Friday morning class.
Do you know what that Friday is?
All right. All those in favor of Resolution 147, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is a submission of the capital improvement budget and program by Mr. Wayne Strasberg and Weston Young.
Good morning. Good morning. How are you?
Good.
We are pleased to present you with our proposed 2020 to 2024 Capital Improvement Plan. Weston and I, just by way of explanation, have met with every department and every grantee under the county budget, and the administration has reviewed and prioritized all of their requests. Weston has done an excellent job of pulling together the document itself, and I've asked him this year to take the lead on the ensuing work sessions. So with that, I'm going to ask him to cover the highlights of what we're proposing in this plan.
Sure. So for the 2020 to 2024 CIP, this five-year planning document, we have a total of $49.2 million in proposed projects for the upcoming fiscal year 20. Of that, $20.9 million comes from a combination of a proposed $12 million bond and an $8.9 million in Pago. The balance of that, that's less than half of the total project costs, will primarily come from state and federal grant sources. We will retire $11 million in debt, so the incremental debt will rise by $1 million with our $12 million borrowing proposal. Our total debt burden will remain at approximately 51% of the charter limit. Principal and interest will remain below the 11% limit, and that's assuming a 4% interest rate. So we're anticipating interest rates to rise between now and when we borrow next year.
How much below the 11%? Come in right at around 10.9, and the charter limit is 12.
Yeah, charter limit's 12.
Charter limit's 12.
Of the major projects funded, we're proposing all three priority projects from the Board of Ed. That includes Beaver Run replacement, the Mardella middle and high planning phase, looking at that building, and then West Side Intermediate has some systemic renovations, including roofing and such. This is the second half of the Public Safety Building funded in there, continuation of development of the airport, multiple road, bridge, and dam projects, and major maintenance projects to the county-owned buildings, so taking care of what we have, which has been pretty consistent the last few years. We should have, I've handed document to Laura in a hopefully easily copyable form, and we should have the digital copy online this afternoon.
On the Public Safety Building, are we going to receive a more in-depth briefing on the plans on that before we approve the CIP?
No, we're just going to build it. We'll surprise you.
So, so where?
No, 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 the star's gone, trust me. We're working on that right now.
Yeah, we're putting out a request for proposals for the architectural engineering, so that's, that's where we're going to take, say, the image you saw previously and put it in a affordable form.
Didn't we already have an architect and engineering group here?
It was concept.
Yeah, that was a concept design, John. Now we have to go to the actual construction architectures, and really, the first thing we have to do is get this project within the limits that we've put into the CIP. And so we have quite a bit of work to do internally so that we can give direction to the architect, whomever we hire, and we'll put that out as an RFP.
And is that for both sheriff and emergency services?
Yes, yes.
The final document, yeah, the, yeah.
So when would be the plan to start on the emergency services portion of it?
Well, we would start on the entire project at the same time.
Right, but what about completion?
Yeah, I would say it's, it's probably going to take from today, Larry, it's probably going to take from design to actual construction, and I can see, I would say, two years.
Two years. I know they're looking forward to being in the building as well.
Absolutely.
The Beaver Run, is that the, are you anticipating, are we anticipating the same number the Board of Education has presented?
Yes, they're going to, I think they're going to present to you this afternoon and bring you up to date on that. We were at the last school construction meeting. Councilman Davis was there, and they're within budget, and it's a good plan.
Okay, they have given us a copy of their, their CIP. They've done that, and they'll be sending electric, electronic versions to you, Councilman McCain and Hastings. You should be getting that today. If you want the, if you want a hard copy, all you have to do is request that as well. So I believe the Beaver Run was about 9 million on the part of the county?
Correct, and that's what we have proposed in the CIP.
We're planning to borrow that this year. Keep that project on schedule.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right, look forward to the work sessions.
Yeah, look forward to seeing it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy work sessions.
Mr. President, that is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Mr. Taylor, good morning.
Good morning. Two legislative bills for introduction this morning. The first is Legislative Bill 2018-13, an Act to amend the Wacomiko County Personnel Manual, Chapter 1, titled Authority, Objective, and Scope. Section 0104, titled Scope. Chapter 6, titled Recruitment and Selection. Section 0615, titled Appointments. Chapter 8, titled Probationary Period. Section 0801, titled Objective. And Chapter 27, titled Definitions. Section 2701, regarding the employment relationship of deputy department directors, shall continue to be in the merit system and, following the probation period, shall not be at-will employees. Now, just a brief explanation, as it notes in the whereas clause, or one of the whereas clauses on this bill, it's really an outgrowth of the charter amendment that was made this past fall regarding the initial appointment of the deputy directors. And what it does is it clarifies, or I really should say, brings into sync provisions of the Personnel Manual that need to be changed to reflect that, their status under that charter amendment. That's why there are so many sections that I recited, because when you go through the Personnel Manual, there are a number of places in those particular sections where the language just wouldn't make sense after the charter amendment. So we're now, I've discussed this with Ms. Hurley. I assume it's been run, run by or can be run by before second reading, the Personnel Department, the executive branch. I don't think there's anything controversial in there. It's just, as I say, to, to make the Personnel Manual, bring it in sync with the charter change that was made.
All right. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Taylor. I obtained a motion from council to introduce, let's introduce Legislative Bill 2018-13.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I would, I had been in contact with Mr. Wilbur, the county attorney, about this before the elections. I'd certainly encourage any input from him prior to passage so we can make sure it's, makes everybody happy.
Yeah, we tried our best. It's mostly just wordsmithing.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I thanked Mr. Taylor and Ms. Hurley and Mr. Wilbur, everybody else that was involved in this process, because it seems like it took a long time.
All those in favor of the introduction of Legislative Bill 2018-13, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Legislative Bill 2018-13's been introduced.
Just for, you know, clarification, Mr. Wilbur has reviewed that bill and is fine with the way it's drafted. We can have a public hearing on January the 15th at 10:00 AM.
All right, sounds good, Ms. Hurley. Thank you.
Yeah, the second legislative bill is number 2018-05, Amendment Number 2, an Act to amend and transfer the appropriation from estimated contribution to fund balance account and the use of prior year funds balance account to solid waste enterprise fund, cell nine construction project account in the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. That is being introduced at the request of the county executive, and I did not, did not work on that, so if you want any information on that today, you'll have to ask, ask Mr. Strasberg.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I obtained a motion from council to introduce Legislative Bill 2018-05, Amendment Number 2. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, this is, this is not expanding the footprint of the landfill. This is building a cell within the already existing footprint, is planned for, I don't know how many years, decades possibly, so it's not purchasing new land, and I think there may be people in the audience who are concerned about the landfill, so, okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the introduction of Legislative Bill 2018-05, Amendment Number 2, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Introduction passes.
We can also have a public hearing on January the 15th for this bill.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you would like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name and county of residence and your concerns.
Good morning. You have me at the disadvantage.
Oh, boy.
Just a small one, not a large one. Hey, it goes with the territory. I have allergies. First, thank you very much for having this opportunity to come before you. I just want to say this. I would have been here, Mr. Davis, before 10 o'clock, but there's no place to park. I'm just saying that I rode round and round and round. Somebody might have thought I was casing the joint, but all the parking around this building is for county employees, not for the public, but for the workers. I'm just saying. And for the meters that are outside, I don't know anybody that comes downtown that can transact their business in 15 minutes without getting a $10 ticket. I'm just saying. I'm just saying. And after watching the news last night that we're going to have even less parking, I'm just saying. Now, good morning.
Good morning.
I told you it's not to a disadvantage. Even with my allergies, I could not miss work. I just have a quick question about the thing that was going on, the land at Conley Mill Road. That land that we are so graciously being given, that's supposed to be dirt to go back to the landfill. Am I correct?
Correct.
To use for the existing property. Okay, I'm glad that you said something because I didn't want to think that we were bringing up the landfill again, because I met with some folk on December the 4th that wanted to talk to me about the landfill, so I thought this would be the place for me to make public notice. extending the landfill on Nellamill Road. I'm just saying. Now that I got that off my chest, the other thing I want to talk about is the Wycomico County Nursing Home. It's still my journal that I take with me everywhere I go, I told you I had a boxes of them. Then I also went to another meeting and it talked about possibly closing Wycomico Nursing Home for Katrina Purnell, that's a negative. I also understand while I was sitting, listening to the meeting, that there were funds at the Wycomico Nursing Home that kept them solvent, but to help with a bond, or do with a bond, or flipping a bond, I'm not quite sure, that some million dollars or something that the Wycomico Nursing Home no longer has. If you're gonna float a bond, float a bond to cover you, but Wycomico Nursing Home needs to be kept solvent. And if I misunderstood it, I can always apologize, because nobody's perfect. The last perfect one ascended to be on the throne with the Father. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Purnell.
Good morning, Wayne Strasburg. Good morning. Just to clarify two things, there's been no discussion about closing the nursing home, so I don't know how that got started. Second of all, the funds that are being referred to, that transaction occurred in the early 90s, so that's not a recent transaction.
Has it been paid back? Was my question. I knew it wasn't immediate, I was asking, has it been paid back so they could be solvent?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to research that. The issue, however, is that even if it's paid back, the nursing home is losing money on an operating basis each year, so that has to be addressed. And that's what we're really trying to do. We're really trying to keep the nursing home open, but we can't keep the nursing home open if it's losing money operationally each year. And that's attributable to a number of things. Most nursing homes have experienced a significant decline in what's called census, the number of beds that are being filled. So if you were to go back probably, oh, seven, eight years ago, the nursing home census would have been at about 90%. We have 102 beds. On a daily basis, we probably had 90 of those beds filled. Over the ensuing years, the average census for most nursing homes in the community, in the state, is running at about 70%, and that's due to any number of things. So we're trying to address, how do we reposition this nursing home so that it can continue to operate, provide a high level of service with a census that's running about 70% of its occupancy? And I'm actually meeting tomorrow with a nursing home consultant and trying to get more information as to what is practical, what we can do in order to, as I said, continue to provide high-quality care, which we do, we have a great staff over there, and yet render the facility at least at a break-even point, and also find a way to fund some needed capital improvements that we foresee over the next probably five years. So, you know, I just want to put your minds at rest, we're not discussing closing that nursing home. That is just not on the table. To the contrary, we're trying to determine how we keep it open and how we keep it solvent.
Thank you so much, I'm glad that we can have you to talk about this.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Mr. President, council members, and Mr. County Executive, thank you, Wayne, for that clarification. And by the way, Jack, congratulations on retiring. Thank you for your service, and I hope you enjoy. I just want to take a brief moment. The reason why I'm here with regards to the Wycomico County Nursing Home is because it has meant so much to the African-American community. The nursing home was started by Mrs. Agatha Polk. Her son is sitting over in the audience today, and it is very important to the community in general, not just the African-American community, but the nursing home has found a way to be a beacon of light and hope for individuals who have aged and are at the unproductive years of life and need care. I wanted to say a few things, just so you would consider as you move forward. I'm glad to hear you're not gonna close it, but I did hear a lot about potentially selling it, and I also heard a lot, because I did view the open work session, and with Mr. Crisp, and I heard that he potentially has a client that might be interested, and the word is exact word, that he would be interested in buying it cheaper than probably what market value was. So seems like there's a lot going on. Most researchers agree that socioeconomic status, access to health care, and health behaviors interact in complex ways to create racial and ethnic health disparities. While there's no consensus on which factors matter the most, there's some general agreement on the main causes. These include education, income, health, risk behavior, stress, access to and quality of health care, culture, genetic factors, and environmental and occupational risk. And whether we want to deal with this issue or not in the county, we have a serious disparity issue in the county with regards to services, opportunities, and access to education. And as I look at the council, and it's afforded each district to vote for whoever runs in their district, but in terms of the total inclusion, Wycomico County is just not there. We need to grow. Mr. President, you said a key thing. The general fund includes all of taxpayers' dollars. That means every taxpayer, every working individual, over the course of their work-life that has lived in Wycomico County, has paid taxes into those funds. And it means whether it's the African-Americans, whether it's the Caucasians, whether it's the Haitians, whether it's the Jamaicans, whether it's the Indians, whether it's the Asians, whether it's the women, whether it's the female, whether it's the young, whether it's the old, everybody has contributed. And so the reason why Wycomico County Nursing Home even exists is because in 1960, Mrs. Polk had an aging father. There was no place in Wycomico County because of the segregated practices that would allow him or her to get care for him, as she worked and provided for her young family. I was so happy to hear in that open work session, everybody agreed that Wycomico County, even given all of its challenges, outdated, no money has been invested in the facility in a real way since the county has taken ownership to bring it up to speed to 21st century, to make it really appealing as you walk in. But here's what they said. Wycomico County for most of the life, I mean Wycomico County Nursing Home for most of its life, always got a four-star, I mean a five-star. Five-star is the best, the best you can get. And even now with all of the challenges, it is a four-star.
Four-point-five.
Four-point-five, excuse me, thank you, I stand corrected. So they're on their way back towards where they always were, which means what Mrs. Polk started with is care for those who are aged, those who are infirm, because just so everybody knows, any catastrophic health situation could happen to anybody, young or old, and you could end up in a nursing home. Isn't it nice and comforting to know that our county provides the services in a home-based nursing home where we can know that our loved ones are getting proper care? So, I mean, I'll get down off the box, but I want to say this to you, that over the lifetime of a person working 40 years, contributing taxes at the current rate, given the median income in Wycomico County, if you take the 75 beds you were talking about, Wayne, so you take 75 members in the community, over 40 years, their tax contribution is $4.9 million. Do the math. If you do 50 years, which is probably gonna be typical, their tax contribution is gonna be $6 million. So what am I saying? These people have given money into the tax coffers, they've given money into the general funds, although they're at the unproductive stage of life, they've given money. And it's time for the community to rally around and be supportive and ensure that they get the services that their family may need. So as you begin to look, because I also heard about an advisory committee, please give consideration to the sorority that started the Wycomico County Nursing Home and see if they would be interested in serving, which is the National Sorority of Phi Delta Kappa Beta Tau Chapter. Reach out to the African-American community. We have all kinds of talented individuals in our community, anxious to serve and to ensure some of the enduring vestiges of our foreparents, forefathers, who gave time, talent, and treasure to ensure that this community moved up and was stable. Please reach out, and although, Wayne, I heard you say you were looking at a consultant, why not get Beacon? I mean, they evaluate everything else, 'cause all we're talking about is some numbers and some processes. I did hear accounts receivable were outstanding over a million dollars, so they really have the money if they could get their accounts receivables down, which I heard they're gonna collect 97% of, right? So I'm encouraged, don't give up, but please reach out to our community, we're anxious to serve.
Donnie, could you state your name for the public records? I know.
Thank you, John.
Many people here know.
I was so, you know, Donnie Waters, Wycomico County resident for quite a number of years.
Thank you. Thanks, Don.
I'm not going to, I'm sounding like Katrina. My name is Shani Shields, and I'm now a county resident for the past two years, and as Donald said about the rating, I have a brother now in the nursing home, the Wycomico County. Wycomico County versus the 2.3, one facility in our community, and 2.5, another facility. And the Wycomico County facility is 4.5. And that says something about the care that the people are getting. You have approximately 11 veterans that are in the nursing home right now, and my brother's there now, and he is a veteran, and my sister goes over there and checks the closet, no clothes are missing, versus things in disarray, and my aunt, who's in another facility, everything's in disarray, we have to clean the room before we get there. Most recently, the Attorney General, according to Cherie Sample Hughes, has closed down two facilities that were privatized for lack of care of the patient and funding. Now, I researched, did a little research after the community meeting, and I found out that some of the funding for governmental facilities like nursing homes, parks, et cetera, et cetera, you can go to the USDA and apply for grant funding or low-interest loans for nursing home facilities. You may be aware of that, but I just wanted the public also know. And I hear that they've submitted a capital improvement plan a while ago, a few minutes ago, and that capital improvement plan should be included, the Wycomico County Nursing Home, which the funding should be phased in. Also, you had $820,000, imagine, $120,000. And to me, for a boat, you know, I'm not downing boat and track, with walking trails and all that stuff, maybe people want that, but we also want our grandmothers and our aunts and uncles in their later years in life to be taken care of. And I think Wycomico County Nursing Home has done a wonderful, wonderful job in doing so, and we should not let it go. And I think people here today, you can see the community wants the nursing home under the guidance of Wycomico County, and I'm so happy to see, to hear from Wayne, that the selling of the property is off the table, should be off the table, period. No, not sell it. Don't sell it. Don't sell it. Do not sell it. Do not sell it. And keep it under Wycomico County's leadership, whatever you want to call, the dedicated employees, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I think you see the people don't want you, and we can get some more people if you need some more people to prove the point.
Thank you, Shani.
Good morning, my name is Lakeisha Ballard. I live in Wycomico County. I am a nurse at Wycomico Nursing Home. I've been there for almost eight years. My concern is, you kind of answered the question about us closing, 'cause there's a lot of rumors going around, and we know nothing. They're talking about laying off. We don't know anything, and I think it's unfair. I mean, I realize it's Wycomico County Nursing Home, so I understand that respectively, that it should be a meeting, so you can hear their say, however, we don't know what's going on. We have no idea, and I think it's unfair. I've been there, like I said, for almost eight years. When I walked in the door, it's pretty much the door walking in is the same way it was almost eight years ago. Nothing has changed, other than, yes, we have lost some long-term residents, which is unfortunate, is very unfortunate, especially I get really attached to my residents, but we show compassion. That's what keeps the residents there, that's what, that's what, we want other residents coming, and it gives me a great service when I'm out and they say, oh, I'm talking to somebody else, and they say, oh, where you work? And I say, I work at Wycomico Nursing Home. They said, oh, my such-and-such was there. They are wonderful. So I love hearing from the other people in the community that we are wonderful. But regardless of what decisions made, I think we need to know, you know, people, livelihood is at stake, you know, we need to know what's going on, just out of respect. I know there's a, regardless of what happens, at the end of the day, it's gonna be very different from what it was before. So just, just take all that in consideration when you're talking about what's going on. There's other people that's working there as well that needs to know what's going on. And we love our residents, we love our job, that's the reason why we come in, that's why we try to make sure we do the best that we can, because we care, you know, we care at Wycomico Nursing Home. Just remember that. Wycomico County staff care for the residents.
Is it Ballard?
Lakeisha Ballard.
Yes, Ms. Ballard. What we'll do, we just approved, the council just approved the minutes from that work session today. We'll make sure that you get a copy of those, which you can distribute to anyone at the nursing home if you'd like, and we could possibly send a copy of it to the nursing home itself to be distributed. But if you want to meet with Mrs. Hurley, she can certainly let you know the easiest way for us, for you, for us to give it to you, okay? Before you leave today, we can get you a copy of it. Thank you. Any other public comments? President Shawnee, we'll take the mic over to you, President Shawnee.
My name is Carol Ward. I'm not a speaker, please bear with me. I have a 96-year-old grandmother who is in Wycomico Nursing Home. My grandfather also passed away from there. Keisha is saying the truth. It is like a family there. Please do not close it, and don't put it under anybody else's hands. She was in another nursing home that is not, that is private. They almost killed her twice. They did not care about her. I go in there, they talk to me like I was a dog, they talk to her like she was a dog. Every time I turn to the nursing home, I don't have a problem. If there's something going on with them, she, they call us. They don't care what time of night it is, they keep me up to date, I'm informed about everything. It is a big family, they care. It is jewel to the county. Please do not close it, do not sell it. It'd be the worst mistake.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Ashantin, I'm president of Wycomico County, NAACP. First, giving honor to God for the opportunity to be here, out to President Cannon and the county council, and all those assembled, good morning. I'm assuming that we're still in the morning phase.
You have half an hour.
Okay, I don't need that much. I don't have very much to say about the nursing home, because all those before me did an excellent job in- excellent job in sharing information. I will say this, I'm a retired nurse, and for a number of years, I trained my trained students at the nursing home. Found that the nursing home, Wycomico Nursing Home, is one of the better nursing home in this county. In fact, my father was in that nursing home for about a year. So I was there almost every day, and the staff has been great. They give good care. One of the things that I did notice about the nursing home is that wasn't much funding for uplift, for facelift for the nursing home and whatever. And so that needs to be done. But the care is there. But it helps if you're working in a facility, when you walk in, it looks great and whatever. And also, I think this has been mentioned, the public really needs to have a hearing or whatever, if you haven't done one already, and just brought up to date. It's like the young lady said about the staff and whatever. There's a lot of things circulating and all that. But staff should be involved, and parents or family members should be involved in whatever committee that you select, and that way you'll have someone keeping the residents and their family and the staff involved in the nursing home. So that was one of the things that I just wanted to share. But it helps. It's hard when you work at somewhere and you're hearing all these things about, well, they're going to close, or, and then people are thinking that. It's hard. It's just hard for them. And so switching up from that, I'm sorry that I missed the installation of officers. I was sick at the time. But on a more jolly note, I'll say that I give a disclaimer right now, because 2018 is about gone. And for all the time that I fuss you out and whatever, I'm sorry. I even fuss you out by email, text message. Two of y'all, I got your, you and I got your phone number. So I fuss you out. I even buy a text message. Now, I said I'm sorry, but I don't know whether 2019 is going to be any better. So I'm going to have to pray on that. But anyway, I want to share this with you, because so many times, we don't tell people how we feel and whatever until they're past. I have great love and respect for all of you, and I never want to do or say anything that will insult you. I'm not going to always agree with you, but it's not going to be personal. So Happy New Year.
Thank you, President Ashanti. Any other, any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes public comments. Council comments?
I just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone in the audience that's coming up pretty soon, and Happy Hanukkah to Jewish friends, and thank you, President Ashanti. It's always nice to be fussed at by you. We never, we never take it too harshly, so we appreciate you keeping us on our toes. So I just wanted to say a special thank you to Mr. Lennox. I serve on the Planning Commission. I'm the county representative on the Planning Commission, county council representative. And Jack has been invaluable over these, the past four years, has gotten up to speed on the very complex planning and zoning laws that govern the county. And I appreciate all the hours you've spent talking to me and helping me become educated on that, and I wish you well in your future, and it's been a pleasure working with you. And I know that you leave the department in good hands, and I look forward to a new phase, but I do want to say thank you for all the help you've been, and the county will, the county will certainly miss you. So thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman King?
I'll start off by congratulating Jack. We've worked together for a lot of years, and your retirement's well-earned, and I wish you the best, and you always served the county with the utmost respect and professionalism. So enjoy your new chapter. I'm sure it'll be very rewarding. And just on a final note, just want to wish everyone in the public a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Jack, I also want to congratulate you on your retirement. It's sad to see you leave. I won't have nobody to pick up out here on Division Street no more. Jack's always walking across the street when I get there with a school bus, and he's not paying attention, so I blow the air horn. Yeah, wakes him. Mr. Ashanti, we don't take it personal. We know you're here to do a job and keep us on our toes. We love you. If we didn't, we, we see you coming, like, let's close the meeting, but we know. We don't take it personal. It's good to see you here to keep us on our toes, and I mean, that's what you guys are here for. I'm glad to see the people come to support of the nursing home. It's good to see that there's people still out there that have a heart for it.
Thank you.
I'd like to say, Jack, congratulations on your retirement. It's been a pleasure working with you. I always knew if I had a question, your door was open, and we've had a lot of good conversations, and I appreciate that. And I'd like to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone in the audience and everyone that's watching on PAC 14. It's been a good year. There's four more years with our two new council members on board. We're looking forward to working with them, and we've got a good group up here. And Mary, don't let us down. Be here every meeting, okay? We look forward to you being here. Thank you.
Mr. President Doug?
Yes, I do want to congratulate Mr. Lennox as well. Started working with him in 2002, and he's probably the most active person that engaged with the council, I believe. And also spent many days at the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings as a representative for the Salisbury Fire Department, doing planning and review. Also had the opportunity to work with Ms. Carter, so I know he's leaving us in good hands, and Mr. Hall, thank you. I ran into Mr. Lennox one day a couple of years ago, leaving the beach. I think we were both putting our, putting air back in our four-wheel-drive trucks, so I know he has a life outside the county. So I wish you well and enjoy it. Thank you. I do want to thank everyone again for attending. When I see this group of people here, I've seen them past several months, I know that they're coming here with passion and honesty, and I really appreciate everyone of you coming. I heard some passion, heard a lot of passion, and I'm listening to you about the landfill and the nursing home. Keep speaking up. That's what it's all about. We need you to engage. We can't sit up here and do everything unless we know what's going on in the community. Thank you, guys. I think this is the last meeting before the New Year, so I too want to wish everyone Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and look forward to working with these new council members. I think we're going to have a great year. May not agree on everything, but I think we're going to have a great year. Merry Christmas. Thank you, guys.
Councilman Hastings?
I'll brief her. I never want to correct Mrs. Ashanti, but she said there were two people, she had two cell phones. She's actually got three. She has my cellphone, too. And she can call or text or anyone, and feel free to share that with anybody, because I'm happy to serve. I'd also like to say that next to her right is Ms. Jones, who was my, many years ago, at Northwestern Elementary in the 80s. Excuse my principal. I should say, she was, she was very young then. And to Mr. Lennox, too, one of the best and the brightest, so thank you again for your service. I appreciate everybody being here, and thank you to the council and the folks in the audience from my dad passing. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Councilman Hastings. And the council comments. Seeing none, under presidential comments, Jack, nothing different than what everyone else has said here. You're one of the first directors that I came to when I first was running, and that was back in 2006, and I still have the 16 pages of Legal Pad notes that I had to take. I know we shared that before with you on, on all the notes that we had to take trying to get an idea for exactly what was happening in the county. And you certainly knew. You had all the, at least you gave me the impression you had all the answers. But over the years, I've learned that you do have all the answers, and you demonstrate that very well. You'll be sorely missed, Ms. Carter and Keith Hall. You guys are going to be great replacements. We're so glad to see. I say replacements, but you've been there long enough, whereas you've been holding up the ship anyway. So it's nice, nice to see, you know, you have a solid succession plan there, Jack. But look forward to seeing you out in the public more, and enjoy your retirement. Outside of that, President Ashanti, I would say the same thing. I do enjoy your phone calls. Not for one minute, and I've said it before, but you are, you are truly, you know, from what we encounter in the public day-to-day, you're seriously one of the strongest leaders in this community. You're one of the most effective, and you're one of the most influential. And I've given examples at the, at some of your events before of exactly how you influenced decisions this county council had to make on more than one occasion. So we do appreciate your input. No matter how loud you yell, we all, we all, and you don't yell, but we all grow from it, and the county's always been better for it. So thank you very much for everything you do, and I hope you take care of your health. Outside of that, would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And on January, our next scheduled meeting for Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. is supposed to be on January 1st, so it will be on January 2nd. So it'll be on a Wednesday instead of a Tuesday in the daytime.
In the morning, too.
10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m.
Yeah, 10:00 a.m., thanks.
No.
No, it'll be here. And with that being said, I have to go through the adjournment process, entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session, followed by a closed work session pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3-305b1, to discuss a performance evaluation so that full and frank discussion can take place and to respect the privacy of the individual. A closing statement for such closed session has been provided to the council administrator. So, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. First item we have on the open work session is the application for water and sewer. Mr. Baker?
Let me take a five-minute, John. Okay.
More of it?
There's more of it.
Okay. This is the open work session for the Wycomico County Council, December 18th. First item on the work session is the application for water and sewer requests with Mr. Dallas Baker.
Good afternoon.
Good morning.
Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works for the county. So we received an amendment request from the town of Fruitland for their water system. They have, in the water and sewer master plan, which I believe was updated back in 2015, shows them pulling out of a proposed well, pulling out of the Columbia Aquifer, and they want to switch that to a deeper aquifer, to the Macon, to address or help reduce the chances of getting the TCE contamination that they recently experienced out in the Moore's Mill region. They're also increasing the capacity out of that well. The process for these amendments has been revised on the state level. MDE likes to see a copy before they go to council under draft. The council also requested that when we send these draft copies up to MDE for their comments, that we send the draft also to council, which is what you're seeing now. MDE then returns us comments. We then submit for the formal approval of these amendments, and then they get submitted up to MDE for formal approval. So what you're looking at is just the draft version of this. We have received comments back from MDE already on this, and they are in support of the amendment.
Question, Mr. Baker?
Yes.
The representatives from Fruitland, did they know this was going to be on the agenda today? I was wondering why nobody from Fruitland is here today.
You know, the agenda's published. It's pretty straightforward.
You didn't extend an invitation?
No, I mean, typically, if something's controversial or something that requires a little more explanation, I'll reach out to Fruitland or whatever municipality that's submitting the application or their consultants. But this, this was pretty straightforward. They want to use a deeper well, and they want to pump more water out of it. It was, you know, as an example of what happened up with Sharp Town, it was a little more complex, so we asked them to step in, provide an explanation. But again, this is straightforward.
What's the water quality in that aquifer? Usually if you go deeper, you usually end up getting much more iron.
No, what they're trying to do is by going deeper, so the TCE contamination that they experienced back in 2016, 17, you know, as that contamination would sink down into the water supply by going deeper, and if I'm correct, the Macon Aquifer is confined, so it's got a clay layer above it that would prevent that contamination from getting into it.
Yeah, I phrased that wrong. I wasn't concerned about contamination. I'm sure that's safe. I was just curious as to the iron quality, the quality of the water itself as far as iron.
Well, they do outline what they're going to have to do to treat the water. They're going to have to do chlorination, fluoride, typical, iron removal, and some pH adjustment.
I know around Eden area, there's a lot of iron in their wells.
Yeah, so they will have to address those steps with their filters and processes.
I just didn't know if that was any more, any different from what they're doing with the current well, I mean, aquifer.
Yeah.
Just curious. Okay. Any other questions? Anything else you want to bring to our attention?
No, that's about it. Again, it's different aquifer and a little bit more water. And again, MDE supports the draft. This will come back before you. I don't need a vote or anything like that. Right now, we'll prepare the formal package to come before council. Then it'll get sent up to MDE for final approval.
Okay. Right. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thanks, Mr. Baker.
Next item on the agenda is legislative bill 2018-12. Reference to General Powers. Mr. Taylor, your name is on here.
Yeah, this is, I guess we'd say, old business. Originated, I think, when Mr. Kilmer called me, it was still warm, as I remember, wanting to know who's in charge of road signs. And we decided, or the council decided, I think, to address that in the code to make it very specific. Right now, in the code, it is not specific. There is a provision, generally speaking, of giving the county very broad powers over the roads, and it's item one in Section 77-1, it's subpart A. So that's there. We were given a draft bill suggested, I think, by the executive branch, the language, and that is the bill that's in the briefing book, and it would add a subsection C to that particular section, which, as proposed, would read, "To the extent allowed by applicable law, the director of public works is authorized to install and maintain traffic control devices." That proposed bill came before council, what, a month ago, six weeks ago? And at that time, there was some interest on the part of council of still being involved in that process with regard to traffic control devices, signs, and could also include traffic lights, but primarily, I think, we're talking about stop signs. And that's really where we stand, is to what, what does council want to do? Do they want to be involved in that process or not? I had suggested back when this came up before, a slightly different version of that wording that would essentially have, again, continued the administration of traffic control devices in the public works department. It would have provided that that would be subject to review if exercised. So regardless of who's in charge of it and what review process we have, that still would apply. I believe that in some part, that state manual is to guard against proliferation of stop signs, because a lot of people want a stop sign at the roads they have to use, and if there were a stop sign at every intersection, you can imagine what the situation would be like. But be that as it may, the county does have some control over this, as long as they conform to the state regulations. So I guess here we are. I mean, what does the council want to do? Do they just want to turn it over to the public works department? That's the end of it? Do they want to provide for some oversight by someone, either the county executive or the council itself? So that's really where we are, and I think that what needs to be discussed.
You're asking the question, but to me, I mean, we're a legislative body, so I don't see what this has anything to do with the county council. The, that's why we have public works, and any oversight of that should be from the executive function. You know, and if someone has an issue or concern, and they express it to any of us as council people, then, you know, I think our avenue is, yeah, we make that aware to the executive branch, because that's their, that's their function.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but it's the council's decision. But that's, and that's why I proposed the other language, because I was given, after some discussion with council members, to think that maybe they wanted to be entirely done with it and do just what Mr. McCain said, Councilman McCain said, of essentially assigning it to the executive branch lock, stock, and barrel.
I can, I can agree with Bill partially on that, but, you know, I had a situation a few years ago over near Nottingham Woods where the neighborhood wanted the speed limit changed, and the county executive, the prior county executive, let me make that clear, just adamantly refused to do it. And it was justified. And we got into the discussion up here at the council chambers, and the Daily Times got a hold of it, and they went out and met with a gentleman that was the president of the association, and I guess, I guess a good way to say it's made some noise, and suddenly, suddenly, the, the speed limit was changed. You know, we're elected by the people of the county, and in some situations, the people of the county, the citizens feel more comfortable coming to one of us than they will go into the executive or to another council person, as far as that goes, or to public works, and they ask for assistance. I think we should have some input into whether it gets done or not. Now, the level of input, I, when you call or talk to public works and you say, "I need a sign here for that," and they say, "Well, you know, we can't put one there because it's too close to the intersection," you know, we have to be understanding of the rules and the laws that govern this, but, you know, to be, to be elected in this county and have somebody call you, and you just tell them, "No, I can't do anything for you in that matter," is putting your, putting your citizens off. So I think we need, need some input into what we do. And also understand, Bill, you're talking about micromanaging kind of, that's a word that John Hall used to like to use, but we don't, we don't need to be doing that, but we also, if it comes to a point of a flat refusal for no reason.
Well, I don't, I don't think at all we refuse them or, you know, don't try to help them. We should try to help them.
Yeah.
I think, but I think that's what, that's how we help them. We direct them to the right folks that can actually do something about it.
But sometimes they, sometimes it could happen that they don't want to do anything about it, you know, so.
But that could, that could happen with them.
I understand.
Yeah, that everything.
Well, I'm the one that kind of brought this up, so.
It's your fault.
Yeah, it really is my fault, and this, this debate over this legislation is turning out to be like the debate over the stop sign that prompted this legislation, you know, everyone, you know, it depends on, your feelings on it depends on where you come from, you know, because like the stop sign issue, you know, certain people living on one road wanted a stop sign, but people on the road, coming into that road, didn't want the stop sign. And they each have legitimate points of view on, well, we need it for this, and the other people, we don't need it for that. And, you know, talking with Lee from Rhodes, who's, you know, got a long history in sign management, you know, I got an education on what stop signs are for and all that sort of stuff. And there, you know, it kind of needs to be more of a objective standard to put stop signs than just, you know, what one people feel on a certain road, you know, because they like it, and other people, you know, have equally valid views on the other road. And so, you know, we're politicians, and, you know, when people say something, "Oh, that sounds good," and the other people say something, "Well, that sounds good, too." And, you know, it's, you know, leaving it up to an expert, you know, in roads, you know, I don't know if that's abdicated in our responsibility almost, but, you know, with traffic control signs, you know, we don't, I don't have a lot of expertise in it at least. And, you know, the idea that, you know, we should be pressuring to put signs because people want them is part of the reason why, you know, I kind of thought we needed to have more of a standard here to say, "Look," you know, so we can point and say, "Here's why signs are put up, and here's why they're not." It's not just on the whim of a council member responding to a neighbor who's upset. So, you know, I, I think I'd be okay with leaving it as it's written in the brief book. I do understand, you know, the need, you know, we are elected, and we do, people contact us about stuff, they do deserve an answer. It's a tough nut to crack, but I, I kind of like the idea that, you know, there are objective measures to put a stop sign up or traffic control devices at least. This is specifically traffic control. Other sort of road signs, I don't think would be covered by this that aren't traffic control, where we would have more, say. But with traffic control, I think there's more of an objective standard, so I'm okay with leaving that with public works, so. But I do understand what you're saying, Joe.
Well, this was before my time, and everybody else is here on the council. I don't know if there's probably maybe a couple people in the room that remembers the naming of the Nanticoke Road change. I remember. That was, that was a pretty big deal, and, you know, like I say, I do think the council needs to be able to have some input if needed, so.
Mr. Taylor, there seem to be some inconsistencies. Why is it that the council does have the authority to approve or disapprove of parking signs, you know, along the streets? Is there a no parking sign or not? And yet, this is being suggested the council shouldn't take a role in stop signs and stop lights.
Well, to answer your question about the parking signs, I think that's just a matter of practice that's been done in the past. I mean, as I read the code the way it reads now, I think by default, even though it doesn't say that the executive branch is in charge of that exclusively, I think that would be the, the normal reading of it. Because as Mr. McCain points out, it's not a legislative matter, it's an operational or an administrative matter. So I think probably, if you just went with what it, the way it reads now, that would be the default position. But I think it's worthwhile to clarify that because of the uncertainty that's existed. Now, when you get down to parking signs, probably, because we're not, we're not talking about parking signs right now.
I understand.
Traffic, traffic control devices. I think probably that would be the default on those signs as well, I think.
We have had resolutions that came to our table here where we had to approve a parking sign on a particular street, dead-end street.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's anything in the county code that addresses that. I mean, I think that's just been the practice, but I don't, you know, I don't know, I wasn't involved in those matters.
No.
But when you read through the code, you know, it says the county has the power to do these things. It doesn't specify who, and I think the default would be, it would be the executive branch because of the nature of the matter.
We continually run into things in the code that's never been changed from when the executive came into being.
That's true.
You know, and I guess we've just found another one.
Yeah, and that's, and that's true. I mean, bear in mind, before we had the executive.
Right.
And it was, you know, then the county council had broader, broader scope.
And I do want to say, you know, other than that issue with the speed limit on Outon Road that day, there's always been full cooperation from public works any time I've called them. Apparently, you got good cooperation that day, and that got you.
Yeah, no, I mean, they've been great, but it would be nice to know, you know, because they got the call, you know, who puts up signs and what signs. And, well, you know, we put up some traffic signs, but you look in the code, and we maybe didn't need to do that. So, I mean, it would be good to clarify, all right, so, you know, traffic signs, that's public works, or if it's parking signs, that's us, you know, let's, let's have an answer so we can say, either we can do something or we can't do something, or, you know, or what. It'd be good for us to know so we're not kind of out there in this limbo where people approach us, say, "I don't know, I don't know what the, you know, what the deal is."
I think if, we're establishing this to some specific grounds that people can follow. I think we find trouble with it, Joe, in the future, where, you know, we really feel that the council needs to get involved in the process. We can always amend this later.
Well, we always, we always seem to. If we have a problem, we always bring it up, so. I say we always work through it if we have a problem.
Yeah. Well, here's just my suggestion maybe as to how to proceed, because I think we have a deadline on this, don't we?
We do. The drop date is January the 19th, so we would need to vote or extend the deadline to vote at the January 15th meeting.
Yeah. If, if you all are of the mind that this should be in the executive branch, let me do this, and it can be amended on second reading if you're so inclined. There's two things that I think should be changed in the, in the proposed bill. One, we've just been discussing, and I've got language on that, and it does provide for oversight by the county executive. So there would be that mechanism to go beyond the public works department if somebody in the public wants to do it, if you're so inclined to have that additional level of review. The other thing is, and this is more of a housekeeping matter, and I'm going back to that subpart A that begins, "Anything in this article or in law to the contrary notwithstanding, the county shall have full power and authority," and then it goes on and discusses the different matters involving roads. The, that's really not correct. That's misleading, because it is subject to the state law and regulations. So I would suggest striking that language, "Anything in this article or in law to the contrary notwithstanding," and adding in its place, "Subject to applicable law and regulations thereunder." It's just a housekeeping matter, but I think it makes the, the language consistent with what realistically is the legal situation.
Bob, in this, in Section 77-1, General Powers B, "The county shall have the right to acquire property by condemnation, which shall be exercised in accordance with the provisions of Annulated Code of Maryland Real Property." What's, does that, is that basically giving the county executive powers to condemn property to acquire?
Well, it's, it's giving the county power to do it, but there are other provisions of state law that require that to come before the council. Is there?
That's almost, that's almost the language you could put in there in this situation, you know, I mean, they have, the county has the power, but and/or the laws of the, as you just said, whatever applicable laws.
And, and that's more, and that's more or less what we have, the language would operate that way, by changing it in A.
Mrs. Hurley, it would have to be changed in a meeting through an amendment as opposed to?
That is, that is correct.
Yeah, it's not, we're not here for edification purposes, yes.
Yeah.
Do, does the council agree with Mr. Taylor's recommendations on amendments?
I think it's good.
So that we could formally, Mr. Taylor, if you could formally, for the next meeting?
Well, I can, I can, I can, before the next meeting, I can do it this afternoon or tomorrow, send you what I've got. And if anybody wants to discuss it, we can certainly discuss it at the next, at the January meeting she mentioned, and change it any way you want to.
Sounds like there, there's inclination to go ahead and follow your advice, and so if you prepare that so we had the proper reading for the amendment.
All right.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. The third item in the final work session before we take a recess for the Department of Education is the council appointments to boards and commissions. Mrs. Hurley.
What you have in your briefing material is a list of boards and commissions that council members are currently serving on, as well as some vacant positions on some boards and commissions. What I thought we could do is review each one, and you can let me know whether or not you're interested in being reappointed to that board or commission, or if it's a vacant position, if you're interested in serving on that board or commission. So if we can start with President Cannon. You're currently serving on the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce as a representative. Are you interested in continuing to serve?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with all of these. I've been on, the only one is I've been on PAC 14 for years, and I, I would be interested in the, the school building commission or the airport commission, but we already have, well, we, we have Ernie's on the school building commission.
You could have two on the school building.
The, there is a vacancy.
The airport.
With the airport commission. I wouldn't mind doing that, to be quite honest with you.
I'll do PAC 14.
Okay. Okay.
And you're okay with serving on all the other commissions under your name?
The other ones I'm kind of required to is president of the council.
Okay.
That, I think that would transition with a, with a new president. The new president would take that role as the next official member of the chamber on the SWED revolving loan in the tri-county council, to a certain, to a certain degree on the tri-county.
Councilman Kilmer, I have you serving on the library board of trustees and the planning and zoning commission. Your term doesn't expire till 2020, so.
That's good with me.
You're good with that, okay. Councilman Joe Holloway, what about your boards and commissions?
I'm fine with everything, and I will do PAC 14 if you want me.
Okay. Councilman Dodd?
I'm fine with Rexon Parks, tri-county council. I didn't know I was on the social services. Looks like I was put on that on 2017. How'd that happen?
I got off.
It was by resolution.
You weren't here that meeting.
I thought you asked me, and I said I, I don't think I could do it. It's no big deal. I was interested in the airport commission, but I, I can take on another one. And what happened to Warwick? I thought that was one of the committees.
It's never a formal thing.
Yeah. I can do, since I'm already on Rexon Parks and we've kind of combined it, I can do the tourism as well.
Okay, so you want to do the tourism and civic center commission?
What do you think about that, Bob?
Isn't it, isn't it combined already?
What?
Which combined?
They're both combined. Okay, so that, scratch that through, and then, yeah, so I'm already on it then.
Well, you're on Wreckin' Parks.
Right, but it's, it's combined.
Well, Wreckin' Parks is separate than the tourism and civic center.
Civic center and tourism are combined.
Correct.
So I would, I would do that.
Okay, so you're going to continue to serve on Wreckin' Parks?
So that's still one commission then.
Plus the recreation and parks one, though?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely.
And the social services advisory board, are you willing to serve on that?
I'm willing to give it to somebody else, but if nobody else wants it, I guess I'm there by default. Thanks, Ernie. I see you snickering.
Okay, let's move on. Councilman Davis?
I'm good.
Okay, so looking at the vacant positions, is anyone willing to serve on Shoreup?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we split those, those committees up between our two new council people.
I need a second.
I'll do the natural resource conservation one. We actually just met. I've been on that for, I think, eight years anyhow, but I was actually a, John Hall was our rep, but I was on it as an advisor, so I can just switch my role to the county.
County representative.
County representative. They have someone that got identified for my role as an advisor.
Okay.
So I'll do that, and I'll do the natural resource conservation one.
You've done SWED before, haven't you?
Josh, are you available to do Shoreup?
Yeah. When do they meet?
Yeah, I've been on that SWED revolving loan committee one, I'll, I'll do that as well.
Oh, you do the revolving loan one as well? Okay. Okay, the Shoreup, they actually meet, their next meeting is January the 7th. They meet every other month at 4:30 at the Shoreup office on Snow Road.
What day of the week?
She did not give me the day. It's January the 7th is the next meeting date, but I don't know the day of the week.
Personally, I'm cautious of overloading myself on the first year, given state commitments and other things. I did, if it was okay, I did want to serve on, a couple ones I do. I don't know if we have tri-county council voting members, if that's taken up, but I...
We need two voting members on that one.
Aren't there four representatives for, are there four representatives of the tri-county?
There are four, so I have you, Councilman Dodd, and now Josh, if you're willing to serve on that.
What about the executive? Is the executive not considered one of those four?
Yeah, he's on there.
His, his, he is, but he's not included as part of the four council members.
Okay, so they have four in addition, too?
Right.
Okay.
If I could be a voting member of the tri-county council, I chaired the rural Maryland council for the last couple of years.
It's yours.
And then also the Salisbury Promiscuous Metropolitan.
Aren't there four representatives for, are there four representatives of the tri-county?
There are four. So, I have you, Councilman Dodd, and now Josh, if you're willing to serve on that.
What about the executive? Is the executive not considered one of those four?
Yeah, he's on there.
His, his, he is, but he's not included as part of the four council members.
Okay, so they have four in addition, too?
Right.
Okay.
If I could be a voting member of the tri-county council, I, I chaired the rural Maryland council for the last couple of years.
It's yours.
And then also the Salisbury Promoco Metropolitan Planning Organization. If that's still open, I'd be.
All right, so that leaves Shoreup still. Anybody willing to serve on Shoreup? Again, they meet every other month at four thirty. Next meeting's January seventh.
It's a Monday, you're on.
It's a Monday.
I have four already. I have four.
You do.
Joe has four. I have four. Larry has four.
Mr. Kilmer.
Wow, somebody's pulling.
You know, I, I, I was on the Shoreup committee before Matt Holliday was there. Matt Holloway, he, he didn't go. He didn't know he was on it. Apparently, kind of like Larry didn't know. And there, there's not a lot of input from us. I mean, there was, you know, got a long time and everything, but it was not a lot of input from the council people, and there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of reason for us to have input. I guess that's what the word I want to use, the phrase I want to use on that.
I did speak to a lady there yesterday, and her name is escaping me right now, but she is very excited about having a council representative serve on this commission.
So, what's still avail, what's still open right now? Shoreup?
We have Shoreup. There's been a couple of people interested in the airport commission, and then I have the Demarba Resource and Development Council. That council actually just meets one to two times a year. Their next meeting date, um.
I can do that.
It's the second week of January. They'll meet at five PM in Cambridge. Okay?
I can do that.
Great.
So, that just leaves airport commission and Shoreup.
I, I took airport commission.
You're going to do airport.
And Joe took PAC fourteen.
And so, that leaves, now, is Tourism Civic Center Commission, is that covered?
That's covered.
That's covered?
That's with Rexon Parks. It's combined, that basically.
It's not combined.
It's not combined.
It's not combined.
Civic Center and Tourism.
Is one commission.
But they're all kind of the same.
Well, we've got it written down as combined here. I, I'll serve on it.
All right, so now you're on Recreation Park Tourism Civic Center.
Okay, so the only thing we have left is Shoreup. Some of those here that only have two need to think about that.
You can delegate.
No, I can't.
I can, I got contracts with.